Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome this afternoon. Thank you for all for being here. This is the Student Success Committee meeting and today is April the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, and we are convening at five thirty P M. here in the Seminole Mayor's Boardroom, located at the U S Building, room one oh five, at Fort MacIntosh. It is exactly five thirty. Roll call. Cynthia Madistir, present, with Lupita Cepeda.
Present.
Jacqui Ramos. Galina Di Sono. Absent. Okay, moving on with the business at hand, the agenda items. Our first item on the agenda deals with the strategies for helping students with mental and health issues that are affecting their schoolwork. Presentation by Ms. Andrea Lopez and Ms. Adriana Craddock. Good afternoon, ladies.
Good afternoon. So I want to start by starting gratitude for your interest in this topic. I'm very excited to share what we've been doing and where we'd like to go.
Oops.
And so with me I have Ms. Adriana Craddock, who is our Director of Special Services and Counseling. She's also one of our licensed professional counselors. And so we will be informing you of the services that we provide through the Special Services and Counseling Center, as well as providing updates on the work that is being done and where we want to go. So I am going to also start off by saying, or rather speaking to a recent improvement. In July two thousand nine, uh, two thousand twenty-one, it's a Monday. So the Board of Trustees approved a reorganization. And in that reorganization, we had a conscious, a conscious uncoupling from the Student Success Center. So we broke the services into two separate departments. So we had the Advising Career Transfer Center, and then we had our Special Services and Counseling Center. And that was a major improvement because we have seen how that, you know, seemingly small change has made such a huge impact in how we deliver our services. And then also how much is, how that's increased our visibility and our presence within the community. Before, we had our counselors, you know, embedded in the Student Success Center. And so that meant that they were providing a lot of support with advising services. And as you know, we really only have about two and a half months where we have off-registration periods. And so that's really the time that we would dedicate towards planning and providing, you know, strategizing on how to develop our, our services for students. But now that we're not part of, or as heavily involved with the enrollment process, now we have full year to, to do that. And so we just really wanted to say thank you and also to our leadership and, and trusting us that that was a right, the right move to make. And so under the Special Services and Counseling Center, we do have pictured here our team. So we have Ms. Adriana Craddock, who is leading the efforts. And then we have Ms. Mary Sosa, who is our Special Services Counselor. And Ms. Sylvia Trevino, who is assigned to the Fort MacIntosh Campus, and she's our counselor. And Ms. Lisa Romo, who's our, our South Campus Counselor. And then our administrative support provided by Ms. Elena Vina. We are not a clinical setting, which sometimes, you know, students come in with the mindset thinking that we'll be able to provide, you know, intensive therapy. And, and that's really not part of the services that we provide yet. But we do offer brief solution-focused counseling. And so typically, that'll occur within like three sessions. And if needed, we always refer out to the community. And Ms. Craddock and the counselors prioritize free and/or low-cost services for students. And that's why having presence within the community and being part of advisory boards and, you know, attending monthly meetings is so important because we need to build on those partnerships. We rely so heavily on them. And so that's, we'll speak to it a little bit later, but that's also one of the goals where we're trying to, to work on establishing more partnerships. We do have, as I mentioned, two full-time counselors, so one at each campus. However, you know, we may have more need in one campus or the other. Currently, we've actually been seeing an influx of requests coming from the Health Services side, our Health Services students. And we only have Ms. Roja, the South Campus, so Ms. Sylvia will often also join in and help assist with that workload. And at the Fort MacIntosh Campus, we're located at the Keys and Student Center, room one thirty-two, which is also where the Special Services, Services are housed. And then at South Campus, we're in the Academic and Advanced Technology Center, room one fifty-six. And that, the counselor, Ms. Romo, used to reside inside the Advising Career Transfer Center. But we've decided that it was best that we relocate her because the Billy Hall's one-stop shop gets very busy. And we had situations where students were in distress and they didn't want, they were reluctant to come in and see our services because there was really no privacy. And so I want to thank Dr. Craddock also for agreeing, you know, that we really needed to relocate her. And so she found a, a new home in the Arts and Sciences Department, which actually has worked really well because she says that now, because she's there, you know, faculty will come in and say, oh, hey, I have a student who's experiencing this, or what can I do to help, you know, the student? And then also the students know that, build that, know that space. And so they're also, you know, they've expressed that they feel more comfortable coming in to see her. So we were looking at the counselors' notes and, and the, the sign-in sheets. And we wanted to highlight some of the most recent counseling sessions topics. And I'm going to start off with the COVID nineteen because I know that that kind of prompted the, the interest in, in this presentation. I know that nationwide and even statewide, we have been seeing an increase in mental health services as, you know, as it pertains to COVID nineteen. However, that's not necessarily been the experience of us. That's not to say that it's not occurring. It's just we haven't really seen that being presented as the reason why they're seeking services. However, we do provide support. We've, the counselors would work very closely with our H-SOC team in connecting them to, offering academic accommodations while they were, you know, COVID positive, but then also if they were experiencing long-term side effects from COVID, that is also something that we provided academic accommodations for. And then, of course, providing emotional support. There has been some expressed anxiety or fear about the unknowns of COVID primarily at the start, uh, like in twenty twenty, but as of recent, not so much. And so outside of just connecting them to our Special Services Counselor to see if they're eligible to receive academic accommodations and providing emotional support, that's pretty much been as far as the services that we've been offering. Stress, anxiety, and depression is probably the, the number one concern that students come in with. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Craddock so she can provide more detailed information there.
Well, I also want to say thank you for, for taking the time to hear about all that we're doing and how we're working with our students. As you were saying, stress, anxiety, and depression, really, those are the number one emotional states that our students are coming to us with. Much, the major ones, stress and anxiety. A lot of times they're saying, oh, it's their testing anxiety, and oh, no. And so we can work with them with special services to receive accommodations. But a lot of times we find once they start talking, they're coming in for that anxiety, but then it expands, you know, more things start coming up. And so when those happen, we can start looking about providing referrals to community resources to our departments here at the college, depending on what the students are, are reporting to us. And then working on, once you know what the, the primary issue is, work on, on solving that, but then also expanding. And then teaching students, a lot of times, students don't really learn how to cope. And so what will happen is, you know, they're stressed and, and a lot of times we're talking to them, I'll ask them, you know, so when did you start stressing about this? And it's, oh, like two months ago. And so one of the things that we stress is for the future, to not wait so long because they're coming in exhausted, they've already been trying to problem-solve ten thousand different ways. Sometimes they talk to one person and they tell them, do this, right? Go to the right. And, and they talk to somebody else and they say, go to the left. But our point is, you know, if you'll come to us, then we can figure out things together. We're not really in the business of telling them, you have to do this, this, and this. It's, we can offer resources and then help guide them and support them. Sometimes they're in denial, so it's like, no, no, there's no solution, it's all over, no. And we start working with them to start realizing, okay, yes, that's the narrative that you've been telling yourself for all of this period of time. But no, there's actually some other options for you. And a lot of times, once we start discussing, you know, resources, options, you know, we talk about coping when they're under pressure, you know, instead of just shutting down and walking away and throwing the computer. It's like, no, hold on, let's, you know, do some other, other management, stress management, time management. Also conflict resolutions, because again, they're either shutting down or they're, you know, going, leaning into the problem, but in a, in a negative way. So they're really, really trying. And the good thing is, when they come to us, we can start giving them some, some options and, and solutions. Another major issue that we're seeing is homelessness and food insecurity. And, you know, one of the things we talked about is, and we can talk about feeling sad and, and you're stressed, but if you're hungry, it's a lot harder to pay attention and, and feel like, okay, I can get through this. Or they don't know where they're going to be sleeping that night, you know, because if they go home and there's a fight with somebody, they get thrown out, and now they're wandering the streets and they've got to study for a test, or they have to write an essay, et cetera. And so we do a lot of referrals out, we connect locally in, within our campus, connect students with the Palomino Pantry and the Trading Station so they can write there, if they're hungry, they can get some food. If they're needing shoes, you know, it's, we're right there, here on our campus, here in the south. We also will connect students to local agencies with housing, Bethany House, et cetera, or your Housing Authority. One of the feedbacks we get, of course, is that there's a lot of requisites, you know, guidelines to qualify, or just waiting this and so on. So our hope is to work with as many agencies as we can so we can give students options for, depending on, on their need. We also connect students with state and federal benefits because we're finding that a lot of times it was the parents that were applying for different aid. And now these students are adults and they're thinking, yeah, I don't qualify anymore. And so we kind of help them with that. We also have had some situations with domestic and sexual assault, Title IX. And there again, we're connecting them with agencies in the community, Pasadena, California, the SCANS program, but also informing them of our processes here on campus, the College and Title IX. Because unfortunately, a lot of times they're going through things and know not themselves or previous generations or family know the processes. And sometimes we're giving them advice that's actually counterproductive to what they're, what they're trying to do. We also have a lot of relationships and breakups. And so we offer grief counseling when appropriate. We tend to think of grief as someone has passed away. And we have had students who've had family members also with the COVID nineteen where they sadly were going through seeing their loved ones in the hospital and so on. But a lot of times, there's grief with these relationships and breakups. And, you know, a lot of times they're kind of doing it, I think it's the end of the world. And it does feel like it is the end of the world because all they had invested in that relationship has, has gone. And so we work with them to help them process their, their feelings, their emotions. Also teaching coping skills of, okay, he or she is out of your life, never wants to see you again. You're, you were up here and now you're down there. And so how to manage themselves. And then also referring to community agencies when needed because a lot of times, this may not be the first relationship or breakup. And so we're trying to, to change the behavior, change the process so they're not repeating the same patterns over and over again and kind of staying stuck in, when this happens, I do this, and then this happened, and I do this. And so it's, it's working a lot with them. We also have students coming in for academic issues and concerns. And there we can connect students with the Learning Center, the Writing Center, the Trio Program, also with Special Services if they have a disability or diagnosis, but they've been kind of chugging it out and they're going to figure it out themselves. And again, just giving them support and understanding that, yes, you're the student, but there are some different support systems that we can put in place for you so that you're not completely on your own. We also provide academic guidance, career counseling. We have a lot of students that they're with us, you know, it's their second semester or they've started their second year and they still haven't decided, you know, and we do have the advisors to, to help also with those. We, but I see a lot of times we'll start sessions and we're focusing on one topic. But once we clear that one out, then the next one pops up. And, you know, and it's not that it wasn't there before. It was there, but it wasn't causing them as much distress. And also, yes, the Academic Career and Transfer Center or Student Services is appropriate. We also have students that are dealing with mental health issues. They already have a diagnosis. Or they have not been diagnosed, but there's something going on. They're not functioning like they used to. And so when they come in, we offer short-term solution-based counseling, but then we do refer them. So even if, you know, we work with them on what they're coming in with at that moment, but then as we see that there's more, more need for, for services, we have the different resources. So we can use Stress Center, Pillar, Order Region, Scan. And a lot of times what we do with students is we give them several choices. So it's, you know, these different agencies provide the services because sometimes we get pushback, like, oh, no, no, not to that agency because I've been there and they don't care, whatever reason, you know? And so we, we always try to make sure we can give them choice. So again, they're in charge, they're in control of where they're seeking, seeking help. We also do have some student contact issues that will come up. And again, we support, we provide resources, and it's on a case-by-case basis. Okay, so we can talk a little bit about our recent achievements because we're very excited about these. These are all, again, working with our community for more resources for our students. So for example, the subjects is Prevention Navigation Program, Dos Compromesa, Border Behavior Health Expansion Project. Now, those are the SCANS, it's several programs that SCANS has, but we're also working with other agencies, but those are, are the ones where we had agreements. And our goal is to have agreements with as many agencies and resources, and especially the services are low-cost or, or free. That's our, our main goal. And so we know students have daily living needs of housing, food, shelter, healthcare, and then extended mental health services. And we've had very good results of these, these referrals, these programs. Students getting back to us saying, thank you, you know, we made the referral, say, on Tuesday, and the agency was contacting our students on Tuesday. Like, we sent in the, the referral in the morning, and by the afternoon, the student was, was, they were reaching out to the student. Also, we've got, all of our counselors have now recently renewed the Mental Health First Aid Certifications. And I don't know if you all are familiar with those, the certification, that it's a wonderful, wonderful resource for, for everyone. We also have two L P C counselors, myself included. We did training with, on eye movement, desensitization, and reprocessing. This was actually organized through Dr. Malagasa, and we did our training at the, at the South Campus over several weekends. And that's also to help students with trauma, you know, long, things that are interfering with their function. And also collaborations within our, our college where we're doing student presentations and then also sessions about our department to get the word out. I myself have worked with, here, it's eight years. And whenever I started, I would hear comments from, from staff about, we have counselors? I didn't know. They've been working very hard to get the word out that, yes, we're here and we can provide support. And again, and not just the academic, because a lot of times they're thinking, I don't possess the school, like a school counselor, but we're able to provide more, more support. We are working on some different projects, or these are things in progress, in process, in progress. One of them is to obtain a data management software. We have one, but we need more, especially because we know our students are needing a lot of help and a lot of resources. So we're hoping to have that soon, and it will help us with data. Because part of the goal is, right now, it's, we're waiting for the students to come to us. We're reaching out, but a lot of times people are thinking, I'm okay, I'm still okay, I, I can hold out, I can hold out. And the idea is, let's wait until, once I'm in crisis, and until people, you know, if somebody drops, we're going to run, right? But answer that person had already having symptoms, not feeling too well, et cetera, but thinking, hey, I just have to tough it out, you know? Whatever. But our goal is to let people know, you know, you can come in sooner. And I always tell students that, you've been struggling for months and this helped you today. And they'll report that, yes, it helped, it's like, okay, just think about it for the future. You don't have to wait till you're at the end of your rope, seek support, working. So yes, we're increasing awareness and visibility of counseling services with students and staff. We're working on increasing more agreements. My goal would be that basically every need that our students have, then we would have a resource either here on our campus or agreements with agencies that will support our students in all of their different needs. We're also working on wellness and counseling workshops to again provide more information to our students on coping, resilience, self-advocacy. We were working on that schedule. Also more professional development for our counseling staff so that we're kind of on the cutting edge of resources. And then also upgrade our website content so it's more attractive. The information is there, but that was more accessible and more interesting to students. Any questions?
I just wanted to comment, you know, when you first started your presentation, talking about the students, you know, seeking the help and not, and not wanting to, and where, and where did they go to? There's a commercial on TV, and I don't know, social media, and I'm, we're going to get into the, there's a commercial on TV that a young man, a young woman comes in and says, I'm feeling depressed, I'm having issues, I'm having problems. And then, so they turn to like a friend or a parent and they say, oh, just go watch a movie, you know? Get some popcorn, you know, go out on a date or something. And so the question's like, that's the answer to my problem? And so, you know, drives home a point because it might sound silly, but you're going, wait a minute, what's the message here? That there is professional help out there. You start your, your presentation by saying, you listen to the friend, to the, I mean, it's not good advice because they're just trying to comfort you or trying to get your mind off of things, but there are underlying problems and they seek, they need to seek that professional, you know, help. And so I'm glad to see that our efforts, you know, are moving in that direction, that we've got the strong footing already, based on everything that you've presented here, you know, and, and your team being accredited and, and already being, you know, well-educated, well-informed. And I think that social media is, is right now the key to, to reach out to these students. And so if we had, in my opinion, and I'll just step back and, you know, say her thing in a minute, but I'm thinking that social media, do some videos or presentations because some kids, because of what they're going through, they want some privacy. They want to just, you know, right here in my phone at home and my laptop, I don't want anybody else to see, but I can, I can see this video about other kids like me, other individuals like me having issues. And so what, what was done about it, and where do I turn for help, you know, kind of a thing? I also would think that it's very impactful and motivating. I've seen a lot of this in other places where, that you have presentations but of people themselves who have gone through this and have come out of it, you know? And to sit in front of a room with the students and saying, you know, hey, you know, I was like you, I was in your same boat. And I know it sounds like, oh, we talk about that for drugs, and we talk about that for it, but it, it, it is helpful, it is, you know, to see someone, you know, from your own age group or something. And you, your question, well, how did you do it? How come now you're moving on, you're successful, and you're finishing your career, you've got a good job? So how do you deal with these issues that are confronting you? And so every little bit helps. So I'm glad to see that, you know, the progress that you made thus far, compliment you and congratulation. And I'm excited to see what's, what's coming down the pipe and, and all in all, you know, bringing forth all of that to make sure that our students are very successful.
Well, I hope what you had to say. Thank you, this is very interesting. We have reached out to the different places that offer some of these services. Have they been very receptive with us?
Yes, where we have several memorandums of understanding already in place and we're seeking out more agencies to, to work with. And with, again, to be able to offer our students options, to make sure that they will, will access services. But the agencies we've approached are, are very welcoming. And again, it's, it, it also helps them because it shows that we do need that grant here. We do need that funding for our students. And a lot of times with counseling, we, we're still kind of finding the, the stigma. I know that's terrible, but kind of a blessing from the pandemic is that realization that it's okay to seek help. And, and I tell people, you know, we go, if my heart is hurting, I'll, I'll go to the hospital or with a doctor, or, you know, if my head is hurting, I'll take something. But we have, if it helps to think of our brain as an organ, like a heart or a kidney, it's okay to get a checkup. It's okay to go in and talk to someone. And I tell students, even if everything's perfectly great, our doors are open. You can still come by and say hi. You don't have to have a quote-unquote problem to come and, and check in with us. And again, because little things start adding up. And I tell people, it's like having a shoe, sorry, a little rock in your shoe. Well, you have it and it kind of bugs you, but it's okay. You can move your foot around in your shoe and keep walking. But then if I add another little stone and then another, before you know it, your shoe is full of rocks and you can't, yeah, that's it, it hurts too much, you cannot move forward. So, but if we start removing those, and those would be the stressors and the barriers they may have, and it, external, internal. And external, internal, et cetera. Then before you know it, that's all cleared out and you're moving forward again. Comfortably, because we can move forward, but yeah, sometimes like you're dragging, you know, yourself across. The line, the finishing line, et cetera. So it's trying to say, you don't have to circle. And whenever you're ready for us to help, we're here.
So, because that stigma has been going on, I guess, for many, many years. And, you know, when you say, we need to seek help, we need to see a psychiatrist. I'm not crazy, you know, kind of, that's the first reaction, you know. From a personal standpoint, I went through that and of course, the grief of my parents, my father, my relationship and stuff. And so even my own doctor, my own general doctor said, why don't you just talk to someone? You know, you need to talk to someone and let it all out and go, you know, go to a psychiatrist. My reaction wasn't like, what? I'm not crazy. You know, I'm not crazy. But I want to, you know, so you've got to break that first of all, because to tell them that it's not a bad thing to go to psychiatrists. You know, it's just, oh, even a psychologist even told me, okay, you think the psychiatrist sounds too harsh, go to a psychologist. But somebody that's licensed to understand, to listen to you, so that you can pour your heart out and offer you some solution or put you in the path. So I mean, it's easy for us to sit here and say, yes, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. But I understand the task that you have is tremendous because these students, you've got to break that door down, the barrier down first to convince them. And you need to get the word out. It's not gonna happen overnight. We're not gonna cover everybody with this blanket and say, come on children. You know, we love you and we care for you. It's gonna take time. But as long as they know that their campus gives a darn about them because they see all these things and presentations and advise. And just, you know, slamming them with the information that we're here, the counseling center, the special services, you know, and it's not a bad thing to go there. You know, yes, pretty soon it'll all start, you know, a domino effect. But again, it is to what you're doing and all of you together, you know, putting all of this. And again, part of this whole strategy and plan that we have, you know, our strategic plan to have student success. In all areas, not only academics, but making our students, you know, be strong, solid, you know, productive citizens out there. No matter what, they can overcome those barriers. But we're here to use that stepping stone or step ladder to reach success. Thank you again. Thank you very much for all you do. Keep doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, the diversity, actually, and inclusion. Yes, we got that done too.
Well, we have the first part of the presentation and then we'll hand it over. So I did want to mention just some of the things that we're doing on the student services side. To foster diverse, equitable, and inclusive culture among our staff and also students, of course. And so I do want to mention that we will be meeting with Dr. Bonfano on this coming Friday. And so the goal is to develop an action plan. And certainly we're going to be discussing other strategies to increase enrollment, increase retention. And all of that, but one of the items of discussion that I want to make sure we touch on is diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so we want to know what best practices are out there. Because for us, I'll be very honest, we're starting uncharted waters here. And we've not really had that many experiences in this area. And again, like I mentioned, it counts. It's not to say that it's not there, but we need to figure out how we can create awareness. And so that students know that these services are available to them. And so we're excited for that meeting. So certainly if one of the board meetings, if we have moment updates. Or maybe we can be invited to come back and present an update on the results of that meeting. Also, Dr. Dejana has created the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. And so we would certainly like to be a part of that and help support that committee either as members. Or any other way that we might be able to assist in those efforts. And then also, I mentioned uncharted waters here, for the first time since I've been with the college for 13 years. We had a request from a student, a transgender student who wanted a name change. And so it may seem easy enough that we just, you know, okay, we'll just change your name, but there's a process there. And so this, we were, this was a collaborative effort from, you know, from IT to eLearning. To, you know, the registrar's office, Dr. Fred Solis, you have to call on Dean Bena from Student Affairs. To try and figure out how we can accommodate, best accommodate the student within the confines of certain limitations we had, like legal limitations and whatnot. And so we were able to provide a solution to students, to this particular student. And so, you know, their preferred name is displayed when they log into the campus, which was very important. Because they wanted to make sure that their name reflected the gender that they were displaying. So we were, like I said, we were able to do that with that student, but we still need to fine tune that process. And so we're still working on finalizing that and then making it available to students. And certainly we're going to bring in the counselors because oftentimes, you know, they go to them first. And so they're the first ones to know. And then also providing training to faculty so that they're aware also of what we can provide. In terms of support to this student population. We are also going to be finalizing like a campus map so that will identify restrooms that they have access to. And so that is something that Dean R. Delbena and I, along with Dr. Fred, will be working on. To make sure that we have signage and that we can, one, provide when the students come in, but like Miss Carter was mentioning, we want to get ahead of that. And so we need to create a space, if it's on our website or somewhere else, where students know without having to ask. Sometimes, you know, where it is that they can go to find this information and what we have available to them. That's going to be very key. Because oftentimes, these students don't want to identify that. So we want to make sure that we have it available, that information available and accessible to them. We also want to, well, we're very big on data, which is one of the reasons why we wrote in a budget request. A software. But again, because we want to, we don't want to assume our students' needs. We want them to tell us what is exactly that they're needing. Because we can make assumptions, just like again, nationwide, statewide, mental health. Services are being requested at a higher rate because of COVID. That's not necessarily been our experience here. So we really want to get to know our students either by, you know, conducting focus groups, sending out surveys. Or even just being better about how we track our students once they have come in for services. With special services and counseling, the challenge has been, we have to document, you know, document everything and notes. And that's very private and confidential information. So we do not use Banner to store our information there. We use more primitive. And so there is software out there that is intended specifically for that purpose. And so that's why we're wanting to utilize that. So that way we can track our students and make sure, well, you came in for services, but did that result in you completing the courses? Did you come back to Paul's Masters? Did you graduate? And yes, we have the analytical, you know, source to share that when they come back and visit us, but not all of them do. So we want to be able to track them. And if we notice, we flagged certain students and we noticed that they haven't come back. Then we know we need to follow up, right, and reach out. And so data is going to be very critical in how successful our efforts are. And then also just prioritizing professional development for staff. I know at the institutional level, the Community Resources Office required all employees to. Complete a training in diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so that is required for all employees. And so we want to also make sure that our staff is well versed in this and that they understand its importance. And why we're going to be making some of the adjustments or changes in our process to be able to accommodate this. And then I wanted to, if you can share with the counselors, just recent for the training.
Oh, well, yes, I want to say this week, last week. Two of the counselors were able to take a continuing education in this program, having to do with transgender. And so they were able to get a lot of information. I plan to take that training myself. It's free, but it'll probably be next week. But it gave them a lot of information and insight and one of them is the pronouns. And so that's something we've already started changing in our, in our staff. To put in the preferred pronouns to facilitate that for our students. And you use that information. And so, and as we were saying, the need is there, definitely. And is working, trying to get everyone to understand, this is an excellent resource for them. To help not just for the college efforts that they're making, but in the rest of their lives, in their quality of life, themselves, their families. Which will help the community. And so definitely on moving them forward with their education, but acknowledging that. We are all here to help everyone. No judgment, no, you know, trying to convince anything. It's, you're here. And I always tell people, please remember first and foremost, our students are Laredo College students. So we're all, I graduated Laredo College way back. I know a lot of us are. So it's focusing, and then we start working on all of the other subcategories. But at the end of the day, we're all in this together, so definitely.
And I know it's not on here, but another focus of ours is making sure that we truly are welcome.
Yes.
I, along with Dean Adina of the South Campus, we did a walkthrough of the Billy Hall Student Center. And there are some things that we can do to just make sure that it's a welcoming environment for our students. And that's where we have to really look at our process, right? So I'll just give an example. We're very candid, transparent here. We have a student lab at the South Campus that is primarily used for financial aid and admissions. And there was signage out there that said, you know, only for financial aid and admissions. Well, but if we're not in the middle of registration and we don't have, you know, the right students, well, you know, this is here for them. And so those are the little things that, and there's good reason why we want to prioritize that for students that are coming in. Oh, sorry. Over the Zoom, okay. And so that's, that's where we really want to take a closer look at, are we true? We want to bring students back. We want to engage them on campus, but are we really being welcoming? And even little things in just the language, how we say things, you know, is there the possibility that somebody might interpret this? A different way, you know? And so those are the things that we're doing now, walkthroughs of the Laredo Bena, the Billy Hall Student Center. And just making those adjustments so that students really feel like this is their home, right? This is their home away from home. And we want them here on campus. And so that's something else that we've been doing, you know, having Congress. We just recently repainted the Laredo Bena offices. So, you know, that they look more presentable to students because that's there for them. And so those are also some of the conversations, like ambiance, right? Do you come in and do you feel at peace or do you feel stressed? And so those are also some things that we're taking note of and improving.
Because even one's own, you know, human nature, especially in a town like Laredo, that we know it exists. But we see it in certain corners of our city, our community, but not necessarily in our students, you know, at least, you know. Because we're not here all the time. But it's just human nature, because when you're not used to it and your reaction is like a deer in the headlights. And that can be offensive to the person on the other end. And I say, again, this is experienced, this weekend I was in San Antonio, and that is a bigger city, obviously, a lot more. But yes, you come to a store and, you know, I put all my stuff there and there's this young man. Soon was a young man with, you know, with the long hair colored purple and pink and other than one. And the eyeshadows, but it was clearly a young man who was going through the changes, you know? And then his name, I said scarlet. You're going like. You know, again, because of my ignorance and the lack of, you know, I know what it is, but what do you say or how do you, you know, just human nature. You're just going like, uh, the young man just, okay, is this, yes, I'm sorry, this is what I'm taking. But it was, you had a different voice, you know, obviously making the change to a female. So it's important to be educated, you know, and to understand whether we have it here in large numbers or even in small numbers. But those individuals are human beings first and foremost. And so we all, we don't like when somebody calls us on something and we get offended, you know, we think you are calling like that. So we have to, you know, be aware and be very sensitive and that's the bottom line, I think, to understand. So, yeah, making them welcome and know that they're doing nothing wrong. It's just whatever they feel, you know, it's going through their genes. And however it is, but nonetheless, thank you.
So that's all I have to share for the student services side. If you have any questions.
No, thank you. This is, this is really good and I'm glad that we're getting there. My only question is, have you submitted that purchase order for that software? Does it have to go through the board?
For, yes, for next, this year.
Oh, okay. But I'm glad to do, I mean, anything that you all need to make your jobs better. The board is here to help and support all of you. If we have the money, we can. If we don't, we get told, we don't have enough. We'll work it out. Thank you. Appreciate the report.
I'll have to bring it down because I'm dressed like a lot taller than I am. Most people are, but it's okay. So, good evening, board. My name is Sada Siviridis. I'm the Dean of Academic Innovation and Technology. And we're going to, along with my colleague here, Professor Ransin Hani, we're going to give you an update on the instructional side and some of the things that we're doing. So to start off with, I'm going to give an update as to some changes we're making at the eLearning and Instructional Innovations. And as it pertains to our faculty eLearning Academy. And so we're looking at revamping the academy that we have. And the academy is more geared on the technology side. We teach faculty how to use the different technologies that we have as it pertains to teaching. Like our learning management system, Canvas, Responders, Turnitin. We also go with FERPA requirements and things of that nature. But one of the things that we're going to be including and we hope to have that ready is our accessibility workshop. Even though we're already doing some work and I'll show you a little bit later in the presentation, some of the work that we're already doing with the faculty. As it pertains to accessibility, there's still a lot of work to be done and to educate faculty on the importance of accessibility. As it pertains not only to the online environment, especially because of COVID. Our learning management system, all students are using it, all faculty are using it. Our learning management system is a policy here at the college. And the grades have to be posted through Canvas. But the other thing that faculty are going to have to do now is do their syllabus through Canvas. We've obtained a software that has the course syllabus in Canvas. And so all of that is going to be in Canvas. So faculty need to understand how to make their courses or their course content in Canvas accessible to all students. And that's part of the Office of the Civil Rights. We need to ensure that we have an equal, a level playing field for all students. So that's important as we look at accessibility in the online environment, especially through Canvas. We're also going to educate them on some of the accommodations, right? What is the meaning of accommodations and what they could do to ensure that their courses are more accessible? Are they captioning? You know, we do have a screen reader in Canvas. And the screen reader reads everything that's on the screen for students within the Canvas environment. Also ensuring that they understand how to develop accessible documents. And we do have a software that is also integrated into Canvas and I'll show you that in a few minutes. That helps faculty to see how their score, how their course scores, right? The other thing that we're trying, that we want to do as part of our workshop is helping faculty. um, helping faculty identify different strategies in order to make their courses more accessible. And again, we say a lot of the online, because that's what we focus more on when we, when we think of Canvas. But um, in light of COVID, everybody's using Canvas. And as we can, as we transition students back on campus, the goal is for faculty to continue using Canvas to deliver some of their course content and ta- for student testing and that sort of thing. So in order, in order for our faculty to understand the different strategies, that's going to be part of our workshop as well. One of the other things that we focus on, and I talked about them, or I just, um, I um, I talked about the read speaker, right? It's, it's a technology that we integrate into Canvas that will read everything that's on the screen for the students. The other technology that we have is we call it Blackboard Ally. And that gives us a score of the accessibility of the course, but it also gives us our institutional score. So it looks at all of the courses in Canvas and then gives us a score. And I'll show you that in a few minutes. So identifying different technologies that faculty can use, again, to make the courses more accessible. Understanding the different needs of students, right? There's not, it's not only physical needs, it's also cognitive needs that students, you know, that students have, right, that we need to ensure that we're providing the assistive technology in order to help them to succeed. And, and again, here's just listing a couple of things that we were going to be identifying through our workshop. Um, the workshop, like I mentioned, we hope to have it ready by late summer. But um, for sure, we're going to be pushing that out to faculty during convocation week. Um, we normally use convocation week to provide faculty with all of the different, um, with the new technologies that we have coming on. And so we give them that professional development during that week because we know that um, classes haven't started yet. They can actually make time for that. We do offer our workshops not only face-to-face, but we have on-demand workshops. So we have a platform that faculty are able to log in and view the workshops on their own time. And so we make it very accessible for faculty so that we ensure that they're getting the professional development that is required. Um, some of the tips that we're going to include in our workshop is, you know, teaching strategies, orienting students on the course, how to use our Canvas framework, and making sure that the navigation. And again, this all boils back to, to quality matters, right? Quality matters. When they did the revamp of the rubric from the fifth edition to the sixth edition, one of the standards that they highlighted the most was the accessibility standard. Ensuring that our, our, our online environment is fully accessible. And now it's even harder to get the courses to them certified if we don't meet that particular standard. Because it is a, it is a, an essential standard. So this is what the, the course level scores, scorecard looks like. So if you notice, um, in the wheel, you've got all these different colors and it'll show how many signings um, the course has, how many um, Word documents are attached, how many PDFs and so on. And it'll show the score of the course up at the top. So if you notice up at the top, this course is ninety-nine percent accessible. And what we've done is we created a workshop that is strictly on Blackboard Ally, which is the assistive technology that we currently have here. And faculty are actually, they go through their course, I mean, they go through the workshop to learn how to use the tool. And then once they learn how to use the tool, they go back into their course. And the Blackboard Ally is actually identifying areas of weaknesses and what they can do to, to, to increase that score. And so they're not alone. They're actually giving tips within the, um, the technology. This is our institutional scorecard. Right now, we're at seventy-seven percent. And so the goal is to bring that up at least above ninety percent. Because what we want to do is, we want to ensure that all students have accessible courses. And so that's what we're working on. And one of the things that we developed were the accessibility badges. And so we've got three. We've got the, kind of like the Olympics, right? The silver, the bronze, and the gold. And so faculty, depending if they're fifty, if their course, once they go in there and they make the changes, if their course is fifty percent accessible, then they get the bronze, the bronze badge. And we put it right there on the homepage of their course. The other one is a silver. If they get it up to eighty-five percent, then they get the silver badge. And again, we put it there um, next to, on their homepage. And a lot of times, these badges are next to the Q and certification seal that we put once they complete the Q and certification successfully. And then of course, if they get it to a hundred percent accessible, they get the gold badge. And so we've kind of made it fun for faculty to do, right? And, and you know that faculty like to kind of compete against each other. And so we give them that encouragement. If you do it so much, you'll get a, you know, you'll get this particular badge placed on your course. And it's funny because they'll get it done and then they'll send the email, okay, I did it a hundred percent. Where's my badge? And so we put their badge up on the board. And so we make, you know, even though this is work for the faculty, we try to make it fun so that, so that they'll do it, right? And, and again, at the end of the day, this is, it, this is providing an equal playing field for all of our students.
With the gold badge, you get a free piece of points.
Right. Well, I have a bit different about it. Yes. So I'm gonna let um, Professor Ransin Hani talk about a little bit of what we're doing at the Center of Teaching and Learning.
Thank you. Dean Rodriguez, uh, for the record, Professor, for catchment and any uh, in this capacity, uh, lead faculty for what we've just developed, uh, which is the Center of Teaching Excellence and Learning. Uh, I know that you all are already familiar with the center, but I'll just briefly in a sentence or two just remind you where we're at in terms of our mission. It's one thing to develop something on paper, and then it's another thing as to what it actually becomes. And so I just wanted to speak very briefly on what the center is to us now that we've already started. We're on our, um, typically we're on our second workshop, but because we offer multiple sessions, we're on our, what I would call is, uh, heading onto our fourth session this Friday. And these workshops, this center was developed by Dean Rodriguez and President, uh, Dean Rodriguez, Dean Adina, basically to uh, begin to meet the needs that our faculty has had for a long time, as many of you all know, and that our students have. Uh, unlike the high schools, uh, faculty coming in here aren't required to have some kind of certification. Not because they have a mastery or a PhD or a doctorate degree in their field, which is fantastic. They come in as content experts. And then a lot of them come in with experience from the high school, so they have teaching expertise, but they're not required to have it, which is fine. The higher education system was set up differently. So while some of them come with that background of having mastered the art of teaching, not all of them have it. And that doesn't mean that they aren't great teachers, but unlike the high schools, we don't have that. And as I was putting together our workshop for this last Friday, one of the statements that I thought about and I came up with was, as the um, as the learner evolves, because the learner is evolving, whether for better or for worse, um, over time, so too must the pedagogy. We can't expect to be teaching the same way we were teaching twenty, thirty years ago and expect the same results, primarily because the students and the learners are changing in ways that we're all changing. I was thinking about, you know, how we teach Gen Z and what's made them different. Really, what's making them different is also making us different too. So what are we doing? Right now, we're offering workshops on covering certain topics, making uh, or sharing with faculty strategies that can make them more effective communicators in their online classes. Because it's hard to see the perspective of a student. And right, for example, I'll post a number of resources. Resources that can ensure a wonderful grade. And then the student might come to me at the end of the semester and say, hey, I didn't do so well. What can I do? And of course, I say, did you look at this, this video? Did you look at that handout? Well, I didn't know that we were there. And so it's been coming upon me to make sure that I'm also communicating effectively as to what the resources are, not taking for granted that they know where they're going to be. Um, we talked about maximizing your presence. One of the things we talk about in our workshop is making sure that our courses don't look like they're on autopilot. Right? Because when students recognize, when a course is being run that way, a student recognizes that the professor is kind of MIA, the, the boat is going on its own and nobody's there. So we talked about how to maximize your presence and how to be more on, more involved in your course. And we found the research shows that the more involved the professor is, the more successful the student is. Engaging videos and improving our pedagogy, as we talked about, and teaching our Gen Z learners. Now, um, I want to talk briefly about one of the workshops that we're developing right now. And that is to address the needs of diverse set of learners. And so the next set of workshops that we're developing are going to specifically deal with, how can we be more effective in teaching different types of learners? One of the areas I'm very passionate about is Gen Z learners, because they're the digital natives. And what we find is that they're great at technology, but great at it for what they like to do with it. That doesn't always necessarily translate to the productive aim of all. So how can we reach out to them? To these learners, who we find, one third of them, as I said, we mentioned earlier, prefer gender neutral pronouns. That's what a new research is suggesting, one third, almost thirty-three percent. So how do we address those needs? By, by, by meeting them where they are. The non-traditional student is also a big part of LC, um, who has already lived a life, who's already had a lot of experience. And how do we reach out to them and their schedule? And I'm glad to be working on that. And then students with learning impairments. We're actually working very closely with Miss uh, Politics Office, Director of Politics Office, to develop a, a workshop that uh, can meet those needs, that can help faculty train themselves. We would train them on uh, how to, here's an idea that we have as a matter of fact. We're, we're very strict in instruction about, and we happen for many years, about things like testing. Like the camera must be on, y'all watching, I must be present, right? No cheating, no notes. And then I start to think, and this whole center is becoming a conversation amongst faculty. A means to have a conversation about how to view things differently. And one of the things that allows us to do is to view things differently and precisely in that area is, why are we so hell-bent on that? But where did we get stuck in the thinking that, you know, if I go to a doctor's office, for example, do I really want him or her or them to just, you know, uh, come up with on the spot what the best medicine is? I'd rather they go back, they don't know the answer, look at a couple of notes, consult with someone, and then come back to me. So what are we teaching students by everything having to be memorized? So one of the things that we're going to be teaching in a future workshop, uh, Miss Lopez, the dean of uh, of uh, of enrollment management and so forth, talked about is creating a course that actually already meets the needs of all learners, something called universal design. So instead of waiting for a student to come to you with questions about accommodations, why not develop a course and we're going to train our faculty on how this can be done with that embedded into the course already? So nobody has to feel like, you know, they don't make these accommodations for us. These courses were built in, right? Those accommodations were built in so that we can really and truly make them feel like they're part of our institution. I would say one more thing about the center is that it's created a wonderful opportunity for us to have these conversations in a way, and we say this often, that we're training each other. When I, when I started with the center as a lead faculty, I go to the faculty, we started as a journey where we ourselves would improve our own teaching. Where it wasn't like someone coming in from the outside and saying, you're not good enough. This is what you need. Let's learn together. And to that end, a team of us is going to Atlanta, Georgia this semester or summer, excuse me, to go and research these strategies at a conference that's really the number one. It's called the Teaching Professor Conference, and it is just the most riveting stuff happening in the nation. And with that said, I'll share one last thing. Some of the numbers in terms of our non-traditional students overall in college, um, some of the characteristics. So this is the kind of research that we take and then modify our, our learning. Um, only twenty-nine percent feel like they belong. Uh, seventeen percent more spent per textbook than more they spent, excuse me, than non-generation students. Um, they felt eighty-nine percent considered college moderately or very valuable. So it's a, it's a group of people who are already our goldmine for us because they see colleges so important. Nearly half of them, the total students on college campuses are non-traditional. So take a look at how many of them there are. Over half of the time, financial concerns influence textbook purchases. Over half feel stressed, several of them spend a number of hours. So again, again, this is just showing you the research that we look at to develop those needs. And the last workshop we're looking at is to, to work with faculty to educate uh, them about how to deal with uh, some of the many different areas that students are facing, whether it has to do with sexual identity expression or even the insecurity that they're facing. We like to begin to provide workshops that can make sure that those things are taken into account because they don't all have access to the internet. They don't all have access to this. And that, and in fact, I'll send it over, pass it back to Ms., uh, to Dr. Rodriguez, who actually is talking about the next thing we're working on.
So the other thing we're working on, and I know that Dr. Fred has led the efforts on the all-inclusive. And the all-inclusive um, textbook is where students get charged a, a percentage in their tuition and they have the course materials in their, in their Canvas course on day one. But they still get charged a fee. And so um, we were given the opportunity, a few months ago, um, our DG Tex, which was formerly Virtual College of Texas, um, gave all the community college an opportunity to have a one-year subscription to the Community College Open Educational Resources Consortium. And so I jumped right at the chance because, you know, that's something that we've been talking about. And as part of that subscription or that, that opportunity, um, this other opportunity came up for the Regional Leaders of Open Educational Network Program. To, they're actually um, providing a leadership program to all members of this consortium, whoever wanted to sign up for it. And I was able to put together a team of professionals to participate in this leadership program where they're going to help us create a strategic plan that we can then present to administration to become an open educational resources institution. And so that would mean that there would be zero cost for students in, uh, for textbooks and, and course material. Um, the cost for this particular leadership program was two hundred dollars per person, but they were gracious enough to offer us a scholarship for, um, for four of us. And so we're only going to have to pay for two people and it's two hundred dollars per person. And so we're starting that, this particular leadership program in May. And they're, they're fully online. They, they did say that they were having a conference. They just, they were very excited to announce that they were going to have a conference. Um, but I don't know that we'll all be able to go, but I, I would hope that some of the group that we put together would be able to go. Um, but the goal is to, again, create a strategic plan that is sustainable enough to be able to then order administration and, and present it to them and then slowly become an open educational resources institution. The other thing I'd like to mention is, I'm part of the um, the LTAC Committee with the Texas Coordinating Board. And one of the things that we have is Subcommittee for Open Educational Resources. And so I anticipate that very soon, that's going to come down from the coordinating board. And so in order to be um, prepared, um, this is, uh, this is part of that preparation. And again, being able to provide students um, the course content, the course material, and the textbooks at, at no cost when they attend the Laredo College. And so those are some of the things that we're doing under my division. So I'll open it up for any questions, comments.
Again, I guess every time we have to, the smaller groups, the smaller committees, I mean, you know, that we're able to, as board members, you know, delve more deeply because, you know, board meetings, we just get general information. Obviously, we have finance committees and stuff, a lot of times, times rush. But personally, I'm, I'm always in awe to learn, but, you know, I've already known that you guys are all fantastic and all of what you do. But out of all the things that we're doing, I mean, it's amazing. It never seems to amaze me. And every day you impress us more and more and, you know, that you're out there reaching out and always wanting to be, you know, ahead of the game, which is what we should be. You know, at the forefront of our students and, and doing everything possible to, again, to bring them and embrace them. So again, congrats to you as well. Thank you for your hard work as well. Thank you. I'm surprised. Thank you. Pleasantly surprised and informed tonight.
Yes, definitely. And I agree with uh, Ms. Martinez. And thank you for all your hard work. Uh, it's starting to show and we appreciate all of that.
Thank you. Thank you.
You need to please get sponsored to go to the conference. I'll be happy to sponsor. It's certainly worthwhile, very worthwhile.
Already got a sponsor.
Great. Very good. Awesome. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for your time here, for presenting this information to us so we can then share with our board members. I think that the, the next, you know, where do we go from here now? We've covered a lot of those topics and, and what else is next? I'm sorry. I apologize. I bring my notebook where I have the, all our strategic ideas and plans, you know, and that we're covering each, uh, at a time. So Dr. Dean.
Uh, Dr. Dean Adina, for the record, um, as Alvaro Lopez mentioned, we do need to follow up on the action plan of what Dr. Bon Juan is going to advise the services. We do intend also to bring them in, um, possibly to talk to the Center of Teaching Excellence and, and Learning, um, as well as the Department Chair for Instruction. Um, because Dr. Bon Juan will be taking care of the services side on April twenty-ninth, but we also feel with the effort the center is doing, as you saw earlier, it is important to get more, I'm just so proud of the work that they've done because it's really a collaborative effort of faculty coming together and to see. It's not easy to change faculty, you know, in, in how we, we do our teaching strategies. So the mere fact that they're, they feel empowered and open into, you know, learning new techniques. We want to keep the momentum going. And so we feel that Dr. Bon Juan also can provide that um, that expertise also um, for instruction. Um, so maybe we can do an action plan on that because certainly diversity, equity, and inclusion are, are so important. And we can also follow up on that committee that we're uh, formulating as an institution just to focus on uh, this very important um, uh, topic. And I know that Dr. Ariasola and Dr. Martinez on the assessment and compliance part, they have also a report card on different measurements. And just to share, you know, what, what our strengths and what our weaknesses are, and then that could also help. And then that could also help set this, the tone for the next academic year as far as what we need to continue improving.
So we brought our agenda set up for the next meeting. I guess do we continue to meet, um, three months? That'll be enough time for you all together, it'll be May, June, July, almost getting into the summer. And like you say, some of these action plans, um, you know, need to be given the blessings so that you all can move into this all semester with them and all. So we'll be continuing our three-month, you know, presentations and everybody coming together. So we'll take that into consideration that we have these, uh, four or five items, you know, to deal with at that next meeting. All right, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Once again, uh, we're very proud, we need to, every one of you all. We can't say enough how much we appreciate what you do for this institution. Like I said, every day I'm getting, I get more impressed and more impressed and with that. And, and I can see that fire in your soul and in your heart for our students and it just, oh, moves you and it makes you want to just get out there and, and jump up and down for joy. But, and I just, I just want our students to realize that what they have at the tip of their hand, maybe like you say, it just takes more of honor our effort to promote, to, you know, and get them, you know, the accessibility of those resources and stuff because a lot of wonderful things are happening in this institution. We just need to shout it out some more to our community, make them aware of it in the mass media or whatever it is focusing on special things, you know, every month or something. I think, you know, and I still think, you know, I've been on this void for what, thirty years now? And I still think we're the best kept secret in town. And I've seen the evolution of this institution and I've talked about it before and I've seen it go in the different directions and presidents bringing new ideas, fresh ideas and then we embrace, we don't embrace and, and all those things that happen, you know, whenever there's change. But I'm saying, I still, when I talk, when I start talking, giving me talking about LC or whatever and I start saying things, they're going, you all do that? Yeah, I didn't know you all had that, I didn't know you all had that program. And these are educated people in the community that read their newspaper or do whatever, but I'm going, yes, you pay attention. You see it on TV about something, you know? So we've got great things happening there, but again, thank you. On behalf of the board, Mr. Mississippi, our board president, you know, shares his sentiments as well. So we can never say thank you enough to all of you. Thank you for being here tonight on a Monday, but I appreciate that. And so with nothing else in mind, then we are adjourned at this time, like six forty-one.
Thank you, everybody have a good evening.
Yes. That was a good meeting, short and sweet.